This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and the Chair calls on Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business, and I'll ask Reverend Bruce Ward to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, I come to you today and thank you for the opportunities that you've given us to live today. And Lord, this day we ask you for wisdom. Lord, I thank you for our city council, I thank you for our mayor, I thank you for the city of Gadsden, I thank you for the way that you have blessed us. Lord, your word says if any man lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, gives to all men liberally and doesn't hold anything back, and you'll give it to him. Lord, we want your wisdom about the things that need to be discussed and done to make this a city that will continue to be a city of champions. I thank you for what you're doing and what you're going to do today, and I thank you for your blessings from this meeting, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I bear allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee meeting, work session, and the council meeting on May 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of May 27th through June 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor. Unfinished business and ordinance repealing the City Code Section 649. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It will remove the location restrictions for the selling of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we make a motion to substitute a replacement ordinance amending City Code.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute the alternate ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to substitute.
Okay. I move that we adopt this ordinance amending City Code Section 6-49.
You might tell what the difference is.
So I'll go ahead with the discussion. Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is targeted towards amending or changing the method of measuring the distance between two locations for on-premises alcohol sales relative to licenses next to churches or schools from a straight-line door-to-door measurement philosophy.
Is there any others?
You haven't got a second here.
Well, I'll second it.
Now, is there any other discussion?
I can just make this comment. If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I think that's my consensus also, Bill.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Roll call, please.
This is to adopt the substituted ordinance.
Yes.
Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Avery?
Yes.
Echols?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Councilman Cannon is absent. Councilman Reed?
No.
It does not adopt. The vote is three to three, so motion fails to carry, to adopt.
Nine through 14, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct public hearings allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for grass cutting that has already been performed, and we have six locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. Nine is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement at 602 Redwood Street in District 1, $451. State of Alabama Property Tax Division, James L. Smith, Jr., in care of Patricia Smith. Ten is public hearing resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien in District 2, 421 Roseland Drive, $331. State of Alabama Property Tax Division, Stanley Woods, Jeffrey Dixon, Terrence Dixon, Denise Dixon, Mike Pitts, Reverend Oscar L. MacLeod, and Arthur L. MacLeod. Public hearing resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien, District 5, 1302 Main Street, $751, James Dinsmore, and DeMarcus Thornton, State of Alabama Property Tax Division. Twelve, resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien, District 5, 304 Main Street, $766, State of Alabama Property Tax Division, Brenda Henderson, and Ale Walker. Thirteen, public hearing, resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien, District 6, 313 Bryan Street, 43051, State of Alabama Property Tax Division, Onice Bell Floyd. Fourteen is a public hearing, resolution assessing abatement and nuisance in District 6, 2212 Chester Street, $1,231, State of Alabama Tax Division, Stephen F. Stargill. This is for grass cutting that has already been performed, and we have six locations. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
That's over $4,000 in grass cutting. Of course, some of these are rather large, but they means they've been cut several times. This is a real problem of the city, and I think the mayor's working on something to maybe alleviate some of this, but it's a shame.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this? Does anyone wish to speak?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all six resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Fifteen is a public hearing on a resolution approving issuance of alcoholic beverage licenses. Donal Jean Corporation LLC doing business as Dollar General Store has applied for off-premises-only retail beer and table wine licenses for nine locations in the city. The address, 108 North Hood Avenue, 2617 West Megan Boulevard, 3022 East Megan Boulevard, 1407 South 11th Street, 700 Gilbert Ferry Road, 1622 East Megan Boulevard, 2110 Ewing Avenue, 1311 Knockaloo Road, 124 North 12th Street. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
They meet all the requirements of the law, and really, if we should turn this down, they would just go to ABC Board and get approval, so there's no point in fighting this.
Is there any other discussion?
Sure, I'm just gonna vote a consensus in my district, and I'm just voting on that one on Knockaloo Road.
Can you vote one?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Sixteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with Boil and Benefield, P.C. This is for the annual auditing service for the fiscal years of 2011 through 2013, and the amount is $57,700 for each audit. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Seventeen is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment. This is for Too Hypnotic, which is the name of the band, to perform at the amphitheater on Friday, September 2nd, in the amount of $3,000. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have ordinance I'd like to introduce at this time on the new business. I'd ask the clerk to pass it around to everyone, and while she's passing it, I'll just tell you what it is briefly. It's amending City Code 649 to remove exceptions for property in B3 and B4 zoning. As you know, we just denied a license or changing the distance from churches otherwise, even though in B3 and B4, you can be next door to a church. And since my fellow council members don't think we need to be next door to a church, then I think we need to remove all the exemptions so the ones in B3 and B4 can't be next door to a church. So I make a motion to bring it up on the new business.
I second that.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no, so unanimous consent is not granted for today.
I'm assuming this is gonna be on the agenda next week, you'll work it that way. Is that right?
If we don't vote on it today, it will.
Okay. I mean, that's fine. I'd just like to ask you a question.
Sure.
How about the, and I don't have any earthly idea where one is now next to a church. It might probably is, I don't know. Would they in fact be grandfathered in?
Not according to this, it wouldn't be.
In other words, they'd have to get up and move away from the church 300 feet if they're there now.
If they're there now.
No grandfather.
They would have to move.
I'll ask you if he was grandfathered.
Yes, they would be grandfathered.
Would they be grandfathered until the license renewal time?
No, until they moved it.
Okay.
Or changed ownership.
If it changed ownership, okay.
So there's no potential economic impact, you know, to consider.
That's why I asked the question.
Absolutely, it would be an economic impact.
Well, I mean.
Future.
I'm talking about on the city as a whole.
Future economic impact, if there's a turnover in the businesses.
Right.
That's right, yeah.
So, yeah, and, you know, downtown is a whole different animal than what we voted on here, so.
Downtown.
I'll tell you upfront, I'll be opposed to this.
Downtown might be a whole different animal, but churches are the same, I don't care where they're located. Schools are the same, I don't care where they're located.
Robert, this just proves.
And if you don't want alcoholic beverage sold close to a church in my district, I don't want it sold downtown either.
Well, this just proves that once you start changing things, it goes on forever and ever and ever and ever. And that was my contention on the other.
We need to be consistent in our laws and our thinking, and it seems like to me the thought up here was, you don't want alcoholic beverages sold on-premises close to a church or school. That's what I assumed, that's what you voted for, the three who voted that way. So if that is the case, then you should be supporting of this issue because alcoholic beverage can be sold within 300 feet of a church or school in B3 and B4.
Let me say this.
Let me ask you one question. We're talking about being consistent, and you're the one that seconded this ordinance when it was originally done in 1987. So I don't understand the consistency in it. This is inconsistency.
The consistency, when I seconded the motion in 1987, was to clarify, and I'll second any motion to clarify anything at this point in time.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Then I have a situation, I have a funeral home wanting to come in here at South 11th Street and Christopher Avenue, and I'm gonna bring that next week along with this. It's an old woman.
Okay.
And we'll employ 10 extra people, bring a funeral home in here, and put it right in the middle of an R1 district. I think that'd be.
I repeat, I will second that motion.
And you'll second that motion.
I didn't say I'll vote for it, but I'll second the motion.
If you do it, I promise.
Gentlemen, let me say this to help us avoid yet another protracted discussion regarding an issue that probably needs to be discussed offline. You know, the motion's been made, we can't consider it today without unanimous consent.
No.
Obviously, we need to have some additional discussion. Robert raised a very compelling argument, though, relative to the impact on his community, which happens to be a majority-minority community or district versus what's going on downtown. That's something I'd really like us to consider, you know, as we discuss this further.
I have no objection to that at all.
But again, you know, this, I don't think this is the time and place for a protracted discussion. I think there's still a lot of homework that needs to be done.
Okay, is that it?
That's it. That's it for that.
Department reports.
Wait a minute.
Hold it, hold it, it's a new business.
Be patient.
Oh, you got some? Tell me about it.
I'm trying to.
Maybe.
Let me get my heart quit beating so fast, and I'll be right with you. Okay. I have a resolution, 223, like to ask for unanimous consent to consider. This is authorizing agreement with Auxiliary Power Systems, Inc. for maintenance of a generator for two visits per year. It is budgeted for $400. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Consent is not granted.
Okay, they don't need that power system anyway.
Anybody else got any new business?
I got one more. This is for our first line of defense, the Gadsden Police Department. It's a resolution 225, authorizing agreement with, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, Spade-Tillkey, Inc., for use of a mapping program to keep a current crime occurrence analysis for the city. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Consent is not granted.
Okay. Police Department unanimously thanks Mr. Avery for his no vote.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have an idea. Resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution appointing Tim McCartney to replace George Elrod on the who designed from the zoning board of adjustments. So I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Consent is not granted.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item. This is a resolution appointing members to the, a new member to the Gadsden Airport Authority. I make a motion that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No consent has been granted.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, at this time, I'll withdraw all of my objections to the new business. I'll let it all come back up.
So, let me look at my resolution again, then. It's a resolution appointing Tim McCartney to replace George Elrod on the zoning board of adjustments. So I'd ask for approval of this. I guess we better vote on, well, we voted on the.
He rejected, he pulled it.
Okay, so it's been approved to bring it up, so I ask for approval of the resolution. I'm asking for this because they have an urgent issue that's coming up, and they need to have a special meeting ready to resolve it, so that's reason I bring it up today instead of next week.
I hear a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other?
Yeah, the other two. Resolution 225, ask for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
I'm sorry, let me, which one are we voting?
225.
All righty. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, I ask for adoption of Resolution 223.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Resolution 224, I make a motion that we adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Is that it? You got two?
I had the one.
Okay, is there any other? Department reports, committee boards, are there any? Remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start today?
Yeah, just a couple things. We had the end of the Gadsden-Reed's concert the other night, the Jimmy Buffett authorized band at the Amphitheater, and best we could tell, we probably had a little over 1,200 to 1,300 people. A lot of the kids, anywhere from about 6 to 12, they were out there with the beach balls knocking them around. The band was really, really good, and everybody had a big time, and that was a free concert, and there'll be some other ones coming up every first Friday for the next few months. Also, there's some other really good bands, some of the names I can't remember, but if you'll keep watching the PR, you'll know what they are and maybe what type of music they play. Plus, this week is Riverfest, they'll be closing the road, I think, towards the end of the week. It's gonna be really hot, but we're expecting some really big crowds. I think we gotta, or the chamber has a good lineup, so we just ask everybody to come out and enjoy it, and be safe, and drink plenty of water. Thank you.
Robert?
Let me say that we just finished up this weekend hosting elected officials from all over the country. We had about, I think, 19 different states that were represented here, and I think we had a great time, and I know they did.
Yeah, we did.
I'm kind of wore out from it, but I serve on the National League of Cities Fair Committee, and FAIR stands for Finance and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. There are a lot of issues facing our municipalities all over the country, and it's our job as Disturbing Committee on that particular group is to come up with resolutions and/or policies to present to the National League of Cities so they can go to the, on the hill in Washington to lobby on behalf of municipalities and governments all over the country. Again, it's a very serious position. Right now, we're in the midst of a recession, and a lot of cities are laying off people, losing revenue, and we're trying to come up with some type of mechanism to help those cities and towns across the country. So it was a very rewarding meeting. We worked real hard, and the mayor found out, they party hard too. They were down at the Jimmy Buffett thing, and they were up dancing and having fun, so everybody really enjoyed that, and I've already gotten several emails and comments about how much they love the city of Gadsden. We might even have one guy who's thinking about moving. It was interesting. He come up to me and said that he had just come off the internet, and he was looking at a couple of houses for sale, so I thought that was very, very interesting. So again, I think, well, Kerry is not in here, is he? Kerry paying with the Parks and Rec Department for a tremendous job in getting people to and from the airport, and of course, transportation, who handled the transportation while they were here in the city, taking them around to the different locations, so I really want to thank them publicly for the work that they done. You know, I voted a few minutes ago not to let anything come up on the new business, just to show how petty that is, number one, because the issue's gonna come up either today or next week, and so what's the difference? If you vote on it today, if you vote on it next week? It's obvious that I'm more of a man than the person who voted down the issue that we couldn't bring up today that I bought up, because I changed my mind and let everybody vote on the issues that they wanted to vote on today on the new business. So I think we need to be consistent in what we do. I know that Pastor Ward was upstairs, and he came on behalf of the issue that I had bought for, and that is to do away with the requirements, and I don't think he understood that there was an area in the city of Gadsden where there was no requirements. And then when he found that out, then he realized that he and I were on the same page, you know, that we need to do away with all the, you know, do away and put those restrictions everywhere. You can't start separating and making a difference. If it's a church, it's a church. I don't care where it's located. If it's in the middle of the jungles, or if it's downtown Gadsden, it's still a church. And if your opposition is that you don't like the idea of alcoholic beverages being sold close to a church, then you should be in favor of that no matter where the church is located. And that's the problem I have. That is the problem I have, because we have some people on this council who are adamantly opposed to letting alcoholic beverages be sold close to a church on Tuscaloosa Avenue, but they have no problem with it being sold close to a church on Broad Street. I have a problem with people like that. I have a serious problem with people like that. I also have a serious problem with people who go to those bars and drink, and then come up here and want to be more holy than thou. I don't want to talk about my members. They know who they are. I'm not a drinking man. Never have, never will. I'm gonna leave that conversation alone, just right there. But I support the legal sale as long as it's legal, no matter where it is. If it's legal in the city of Gadsden, then we should be able to sell it in the city of Gadsden. And I've challenged minister after minister and group after group who have come up here to oppose alcoholic beverages being sold in their neighborhood. The first thing I tell them is, if you'll get a petition to do a referendum on going dry, bring it back. I'll be the first guy to sign it. You know how many have brought the petition back? Zero. Because it's all about personal and neighborhood stuff, and you don't care about what happened in the rest of the city. You can say a lot of things about me. One thing I am, I'm consistent. I don't know what Bean had up, what he mentioned, but I'm consistent when it comes down to voting on issues like that. The law says that alcoholic beverage can be sold in the city of Gadsden, and as long as that's the law, I'm gonna support it. But I guarantee you, if somebody brought a petition up here to do a referendum on doing away with that, I'll be the first guy to sign it to.
Thank you.
I think the issue of the B4s and B3s and the sale of alcohol in those districts is a very serious, serious situation that I think we need to take a little more than five minutes to decide that, so I'm glad we put it off another week. I would like to commend Robert Avery for bringing that fair committee into Gadsden, probably the smallest city they've ever attended, and he just did a fabulous job, and I certainly commend you for.
Thank you.
For doing that, and also thank you for withdrawing your objections to the legislature that we passed today, so that's all I have to say.
Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. So is there? So is, is there anyone here from Parks and Rec who can speak to the impact that the extended hours have had? Nobody?
Okay.
So if I, if I can, I'd like to ask that we, at the, at next week's pre-council, be prepared to kind of speak to...
They're tracking it, he's gonna be...
Okay. Also, I mentioned last week about, at some level, helping to formalize the, what used to be the unofficial basketball circuit, so I'd like, like to also be prepared to revisit that as well next week. The, so, Mr. Avery, we talked a lot about this, this vote, and Mr. Avery raises a very, very compelling argument. And I, and I think the one, the one area of his, his argument that I agree with wholeheartedly on is that it does concern me when it appears that the, the area in his district in particular, Tuscaloosa Avenue, appears to be the adversely impacted area, and that is a majority-minority community. That, that part does concern me, relative to the, the number of, of, of on premises, alcohol licenses granted in that area, and the proximity relative to churches. That bothers me. And so I do agree that we've got some time for additional discussion and the need for some additional discussion, in particular as that relates to the downtown area. You know, to be quite honest, you know, I, I think as a city and as a state, we've got bigger fish to fry than this. And let me repeat that, we have much bigger fish to fry than this. But, but, but it's an issue that's up, and we've gotta deal with it. We've gotta address it. So, so I, I think that we need to go ahead and address Mr. Avery's issue next week and, and, and then be, be prepared to move on. And for me, it's not personal at all. It's, it's about what's important for this city. Because one of the things we do have to consider is the economic impact to the downtown area. And, you know, we, you know, in the state of Alabama, it amazes me sometimes how we get caught up on many principle arguments, and we, we forget to, to be, we, we forget to be reasonable. And, and so, again, I, I think it's important that we have some good discussion about this issue. Historically, this state sometimes frustrates me because we make a lot of moral claims. And yet, we are guilty of some of the worst human rights violations known to man. And that's very frustrating for me. This is one of them. This is one of those moral arguments that we make. We're a self-proclaimed Bible Belt state. Yet again, we're guilty of some of the biggest and largest human rights violations known to man. So, very concerning, very concerning to me, and I think, again, we, we have much discussion to have, and we, we, I hope that we vote this issue up or down on next week.
Man?
Yeah, and I have no problem with that either. Deborah, I think you're on the right track. My people in my district send me up here to vote their opinion, and most, all the time, that's what I do. It may be the law, but I can still sit up here and, and give my opinion on things that come before this council. Again, it may be the law, but I still can voice my opinion and the opinion of my district. I was thinking last night, when I was coming up, we had the blue laws, and I think the blue laws said that you didn't do business on Sunday. Am I right? Bruce, I think I'm pretty well right. So we got around that, and we voted that in, and now we don't have the blue laws anymore. We got all-day Sunday business as usual, all seven days of the week. Then we came up and we put the Club 7, the, the new club license in for everybody, which means liquor sales 24/7. Okay? And they'll bring up that the VFW and American Legion and the Elvis Club and all them have it anyway. And that's fine, too. But to surround a church with beer is a little bit much, and it just shows a progression to me from the blue laws that we used to be under. And morally, we were a pretty good nation then, and look where we've fallen to, for God's sakes. We've fallen all the way down to the bottom. We're gonna have Sunday liquor sales here, I guarantee you, within two or three years. It's just one more progression toward the darn bottom. So if that's where you wanna go on the bottom, go right ahead. But I'm still gonna give my opinion on this because I believe in it. And if anybody don't like it, just call me on my phone, I got it, and I'll meet you anywhere. I have no problem.
That's 555, oh, no.
Robert, I'll see you at 2:00.
Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm, I'm a little distraught right now. We had, we celebrated Memorial Day two weeks ago, and during that celebration, we took a minute out to give thanks for those fallen heroes in different wars that have served overseas in different places, to make sure that we had the right to live, the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, in addition to the right to vote. My right to vote should not ever be questioned by anyone. My vote should not ever be questioned by anyone. That's my right, that's my privilege, I exercise it. Whether you like whether I voted for or not is irrelevant. Stated opinions are up here, and they are going to be stated opinions by everyone, for whatever reasons. I am like several of the other council people here who have stated many things about the, the, the situation that we're in now. There may need to be some changes made. We have some situations that may not be fair. We have situations where you don't agree, and I have situations where my constituents sent me here to represent them, and their voice is what I speak, and not personally my own personal, personal opinion. Although you can't separate your personal opinion from issues when they, when they are, when you are involved in those situations, when you are a part of that particular situation, you cannot do it. Yes, we do have time to consider an ordinance that was put to us here at council meeting, and I, of course, I had no knowledge of it. It seems like to me it would have been introduced in pre-council, so it could have been discussed, but I want time to think about it, and that's my, that's my vote, and that's my right. We, we, we've really kicked this thing around truly, truly, truly too much, and it really needs to come, it needs to be resolved, and I hope that we can do that with some civility on next Tuesday. I also like to ask, the other thing I'd like to mention is personal properties. Please maintain your property. We have, we have, I get calls from people in our district that want to know what can they do, or what can we do to entice their neighbors to keep up their property, to mow the lawn, to get things out. And I just ask you to, if you're one of those persons who aren't, please pay particular attention to your properties, enhance the neighborhood, make, make, make your, make your area, make it a place that you can be proud of, not something that you can be ashamed of when someone drives through. And lastly, extended summer hours are going to last through the, through the summer. We, we had said we would do it initially, a pilot program to see if it would work, but my, my understanding, and Kerry understands, that we will run this program throughout the summer in those three places that it's currently being instituted. And I understand that they're having good, good turnout on Saturdays at those recreation centers, and I encourage the citizens to continue to support that program so that we can expand this thing next summer. Thank you.
If I remember correctly, the downtown area and the two zones where the law didn't, was because of the enforcement and the lounge operations by the police and law enforcement. This was a, an area that was the business area of the city, and therefore, it's, they tried to keep it out of the residential areas, which I agree with 100%. Tuscaloosa Avenue, in my opinion, is really part of the business district.
Any other?
Uh, I'm sorry this has come to, to what it has, but, but I still don't like to be put on a guilt trip either.
That's right.
And, uh...
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I'm still gonna vote the way I think my folks want me to vote, and, uh, well, that's it. Is there anything else?
Make a motion adjourned.
It is adjourned.